All right, it's six o'clock. Let's go ahead and call the wing door and we'll call this. Pasco?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Jasperson?
Here.
Illinois?
Here.
I'm gonna start his out. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I would like to acknowledge the open meetings are closed for this, closed by the south entrance. Uh, one D adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Sorry.
Game discussion? Call for vote please.
Abby, please turn her light.
I don't wanna work that out. Okay, sorry about that.
That was too far.
Okay, now are we ready? She do it again. Call for vote.
Motion carried three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Approval of consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Sorry.
Game discussion? Call for vote please. Motion carried three to zero. All right, we will go ahead and move on down to sheriff's report. Do you agree right now?
Oh, good afternoon, evening, how are you? I don't have a whole heck of a lot, other than the fact that it's amazing, we're just talking about the office, that holidays are right here, they're around the corner. So, um, one thing that we do, that we push, um, every year since I've been in business twenty-six years now is the holiday of you drink, you drive, you lose campaign. Um, through the office, it's not so much me saying, hey, the warning that's out there, it's the fact that let's care about each other, and I share that message every year, and I won't stop sharing it. Um, based on circumstances and unfortunate situations I've seen in my career that I don't wanna, that I wanna unsee, but I can't. And I don't want that to be family members here or friends when we complain before we have libations. I look throughout my friends, look at my family, we have a good time, um, I enjoy cocktails, if you do, great, if you don't, great. The bottom line is, I want people to plan before they start drinking. So when you're around your friends, or you're sharing the message with your friends, or maybe your children, whatever it may be, let's go ahead and establish our plan before we go out and have a good time. So what is to enact and enable that plan? We've already got that plan, and you're not like me, and probably not putting together the best plans and decisions after you maybe had a couple cocktails. So, my best advice for us, all of us, myself included, is let's establish our plan before our event with our family and friends, let's have a great time, enjoy ourselves, do it safely, but have a plan in place, um, when it's time to get yourselves home safely. So, I, I just encourage dialogue, I encourage talk, um, because that then will help us remember, um, our family and friends and the importance of having a good time this holiday season. That's my big message everywhere, uh, every year, and I'll probably say it again next, um, uh, meeting, uh, but it's true to my heart, and that means a lot to me. But any questions, the city's still here, it's standing, it's getting a little cooler, but it is everywhere, um. Then, no major events in town, we're all, Jones and I and Riley are showing up to work, so we must be doing our jobs, right?
Yeah, so far so good.
So far so good, so. Well, I appreciate your time, and any time, whether it's tonight or any other nights, definitely reach out to me or mayor, um, and I'll address any concerns we have throughout. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Appreciate it.
All right, public comments, is there any here from the public who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Okay. Let's go ahead and move down to claims for payment.
I move to approve claims for payment in the amount of two hundred and one thousand dollars, nine hundred and sixty nine, sorry, two hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and three cents.
Sorry.
Game discussion? Call for vote please.
Motion carried three to zero.
Treasure report and budget and expense report.
Move to approve the treasurer's report and budget and expense.
Sorry.
Game discussion? Call for vote please.
Motion carried three to zero.
All right, let's go down to intervention ordinance, it's consideration of first reading ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five.
I move to approve first reading ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five.
Sorry.
Orders twenty-five, twenty-five, and ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, admitting title nine, chapter ninety-four, the Waverly municipal code relating to animals.
All right. Let's go ahead and walk through the things that we are updating here in chapter ninety-four.
Is that me? Sure. All right. Um, so first off, um, in ninety-four, twenty-three, we've updated, um, the fees for licensing, um, this particular section is about dogs. Um, so that went up for an intact male dog is now thirty dollars, neutered is twenty dollars, intact female is thirty dollars, and spayed female is twenty dollars. Then also, um, for anybody that registers their pet late, um, the fee went from five dollars to ten dollars. Um, and the delinquent date is, um, February first, so they have to be licensed before February first. Um, there, um, this one licenses shall be issued, of course, now. And then, under ninety-four, forty-seven, um, is where it talks about irresponsible pet owners. And, um, so if someone would meet the criteria as an irresponsible pet owner, they are not able to license their dogs. So, that's why there's a reference to it up here under licensing. Um, the tags, we removed the line that says specifically that the dog, it'll say dog tag on it, it'll just have the, the date and the, um, license number on it. It'll probably say dog tag or something else, but just in case we would ever change that. The only part that is mandatory to be on there is the date and the, or the year and the license number. Um, if anyone would need to get a reissued a dog tag, uh, it's five dollars, increased from one dollar. Um, then there's, um, talks about the information that, um, the pet owner is to be giving, um, when licensing their animals, um, that they're responsible for giving, um, correct information, and if they give false information, um, there's consequences for that. Talks about injuring and poisoning animals, um, just some clarification in, in that one. Talks about, we, um, changed the barking offensive to animal noise and disturbing the peace, um, as prohibited. The big change on this, it says, um, if, said that dog is found barking more than two days in a thirty-day period, or continuous barking for more than fifteen minutes, um, that can be issued a citation.
Out of that.
From law enforcement. Um, we just updated the sanitation regulations, I don't think there's anything that's outstanding about that, it's just updated a little bit more clear, um, on those conditions. Um, kennels. Um, we added some language in here, um, it shall be unlawful for any person to have or maintain a kennel of any sort, including commercial and non-commercial breeding for the purpose of breeding or selling puppies.
So remind me again, do we love, do we do kennel licenses for those who have more than X number?
We do not allow kennels in this city, yes.
So, and that is not new?
No. No, they just cleaned up this language just a little bit, to make it a little bit easier for law enforcement to enforce and, and us as well, so. Um, so that does mean if somebody accidentally had a, a, a litter of puppies or something, that they, they have till they're six months old to get them out of the house and, and whatever. Um, hopefully they're, you know, adopting those dogs out, um, quickly. Um, irresponsible dog owners, you want me to just read through all of these?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so basically, um, this just talks about, it clarifies what an irresponsible dog owner is, how, how they need to, what sets the, the city and the mayor have in enforcing irresponsible dog ownership. The fines in this have increased, um, these are, most of these are certified as a class-one misdemeanor. Um, the fines went from fifty dollars to two hundred dollars for a first offense. Second offense is three hundred dollars, and third, and any other subsequent offenses are the four hundred dollars. So, um, the fines increase, and, and, um, the positions, as far as what the reactions of the city and law enforcement can take, um, also are much more significant. So, um, this is the first reading, um, on this, um, cats, the same licensure went up for the cats, and we changed the, the language on what was on the tag, so. And that's it for animals.
Questions? Comments, thoughts, concerns? Jason, you have any comments?
No, I have a big question about a couple things for us, right?
Okay.
A lot of words.
Lot of words. Took a lot of us to go into it for quite some time, to get it to where it's at. So, um, I think this really gives the law enforcement us actions we can take, which we did not have previously, so. Okay, all right, go ahead and call for vote please.
Motion carried three to zero.
Let's go to consideration of first reading ordinance twenty-five, twenty-six.
I move to approve, uh, first reading of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-six.
Sorry.
Orders twenty-five, twenty-six, and ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, admitting title three, chapter thirty-one of the Waverly municipal code relating to appointed city officials, and admitting chapter thirty-two of the Waverly municipal code relating to departments' boards and commissions.
Okay, so, who wanna go top to bottom?
Sure. So this is, um, dealing with emergency services coordinator, um, this was a position that was created, um, several years ago. Um, at a time at which none of us were in this room, I, I think we're
Except for me.
Except for, yeah, I'm sorry, except for Mark, we're, we're here. Um, so also, currently, we are in the process of hiring for a fire department administrative assistant person, um, and that is somebody that will be able to take care of, hopefully, the day-to-day, um, interactions that, or day-to-day duties, um, that the fire department has, which was kind of a lot of what the emergency services coordinator did, was handle the day-to-day transaction type of things. Um, and so, by having the administrative assistant, um, who will operate underneath the fire chief, and, um, we felt that it might be a good time to remove the emergency services coordinator, and then that trickled down to just any language that was in the code that had the emergency services coordinator listed on it. The biggest changes, I would say, is the severe weather team leader and the disaster preparedness manager now work at the direction of fire chief. Um, the fire chief now works at the direction of the city administrator, and is appointed, um, and serves at the pleasure of the mayor.
So instead of previously to this, it was, it was the mayor and then the fire chief, that's kind of where that department sat. I requested it to be changed and put underneath Stephanie, or the city administrator, because it's this department. So she should have final, you know, she should have that layer of, uh, administrative ability, um, just like any other department within the city. So. Questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
In a lot of communities, the emergency services coordinator ends, it is like the de facto, okay, a tornado hit, the emergency services coordinator is in charge. Did we have anything in that that directed that kind of, those kind of duties, or who, who is the buck stops here in an emergency situation?
So that will be written into our emergency action plan, that I believe Robin and Terry are working on. And so that emergency action plan will line out who, who is that final call, but it will be the fire chief that is that person. Yeah.
Who's in those two roles right now that are still existing, the, you know, city director and the, um, severe weather?
So Terry is the disaster preparedness manager.
Manager, okay.
And the severe weather team leader is Nate Vidlac, who also is, works with, like in Lancaster County Emergency Management.
And the emergency services coordinator was vacated after Robin was appointed to fire chief. And so it has been vacant, vacant since August.
A recollection that position was created largely based upon the people at that time.
One of the things that I've heard for the last four years is that it, that was an unnecessary layer, that the fire chief could not have control over their own department, because this person was over them, and then the mayor, and then the state administrator. Um, and so the fire chief wasn't being able to handle their department, so. Anything else?
No.
All right, call for a vote please.
Motion carried three to zero.
All right, let's go to consideration of first reading ordinance twenty-five, twenty-seven.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-seven.
Sorry.
Orders twenty-five, twenty-seven, and ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, admitting title seven, chapter seventy-one of the Waverly municipal code relating to traffic regulations.
Um, big change on this one, only change on this one is, um, that the fees for licensing have increased. Um, it was twenty-five dollars for a new, like, a new licensed vehicle, and it will now be forty dollars. Um, renewals will go from ten dollars to twenty dollars each year. Um, this year, um, well, and we added a latency for, of ten dollars. Um, after May, on or after May first, it's, um, delinquent. Um, that will change next year, we will go back and amend this, and next year that will be due on January first. They'll have to renew every year in January when they, just like they do their pets. And that is because we are going to an online software to, um, do licensing for pets and ATVs and golf carts. Um, so they will get an auto notice that'll automatically send to their email that says, hey, you have, this license is coming due in January. Um, so we feel that having everything due in January will be, um, appropriate, they can do it all at once. They'll be able to pay online, and, um, if they so choose, we can mail out the stickers or license plates or dog tags, whatever. We can mail to them, or there will be a convenience fee for that.
Um, is that what is driving the increase in the licensing, is the new?
Yes, that's to help pay, offset the cost for the software, to do that.
To not cost more than to mail it out, instead of them picking it up. But you can also come pick it up, if you don't wanna be that convenience fee.
And if you don't wanna register online, you can lock into the office, and we'll still help you license your animals and ATVs.
And a lot of times, I know annually we'll have to increase fees a little bit because of just the cost of everything, but we probably, is it fair to say that we probably wouldn't see this big of an increase again, this, this, cause this will, this will be a large increase for this year, but it's, it's to mitigate the technology.
Yes, and there's no, and there's no proration either.
Oh, yes.
Um, you can't, if you register in August, or you register in January, you're spending that money, you're not getting any, any type of fee, uh, prorated. Yes, Jason?
Yeah, I don't know if this would be a good time, sorry, a good time to address ATV, UTVs, but there's been a statutory change.
Uh, yeah, sure, that would be.
LB one-nine-six was one of the new laws that's coming to play, LB one-nine-six. Um, I kinda like the law, um, but it allows ATV, UTV, terrain vehicles to be operated legally in the state of Nebraska to include municipalities during sunset to sunrise for the specific use of snow rubber law construction. So, um, it's a very popular tool used, um, and I, it, it's popular in town too, and I think that would allow some latitude, um, for your commercial operators here to, to, uh, recognize their ability to do so, do so safely, which also governs, which will help you govern mandatory equipment requirements then, for me to say, hey, let's be safe, we're, we're helmets, we're using your lights, we're using your triangles, we're keeping appropriate speeds up and such, but it is a nice, I think, amendment to the ATV, UTV law, I hope one you would consider looking at.
Yeah. Wonderful.
If that'd be in a different section, that we can add that.
Can we add it as, um, a separate reading, or do we?
At least we'll do it all at once. Awesome, thank you. Okay, any discussion, questions? All right, call for a vote please.
Motion carried three to zero.
All right, consideration of twenty-twenty-six parks and recreation summer program fees.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six parks and recreation field rental agreement forms and fees.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I moved, I apologize. I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six parks and recreation summer program fees, sorry.
All right, discussion. I think you guys were at the meeting, the Parks and Rec meeting, I assume.
Well, this wasn't.
This one wasn't.
Yeah.
Well, this wasn't there.
This was just our last meeting, um, so we had, um, we, we did a spreadsheet that showed all of the costs to run each of the individual programs. Um, basketball and T-ball, we felt that they're still at an inappropriate fee level to help cover the cost to, to maintain those programs. Um, baseball and softball needed to see a little bit of a bump, um, to help just cover the cost if umpires go up every year, and so that's probably the biggest place where we see the costs go up for, for both of those programs, so, um, we did make a ten, ten-dollar increase on those.
Discussion? No? All right, call for a vote please.
Motion carried three to zero.
All right, let's move to consideration of twenty-twenty-six parks and recreation field rental agreement form and fees.
All right, I approve, uh, move to approve the twenty-twenty-six parks and recreation field rental agreement form and fees.
Sorry.
Discussion?
This is the one with Erin and I, I think.
Okay.
The big move here is, upon request of, um, of some of the baseball organizations, we're moving away from the per-hour charge into per-game charge, and then also changing the fee for a tournament. So two fifty per field per day on the tournament, for waverly-based teams, non-waverly is three fifty. Um, so that is, that is a decent drop from where we were at this last year. They estimated on the game day, moving it from the per-hour to per-game, it's about a twenty-dollar drop per game, um, that we would be charging, and then, um, a decent drop on the fields per day on the, on the tournaments as well. I forgot, do you remember, I forget how much of a drop we were gonna lose on the tournaments?
It was.
It's about two hundred and fifty dollars is what I think I have written down.
For the whole tournament?
For the tournament, yeah.
It was like around two hundred, but it feels like we don't wanna discourage tournaments for being held
Right.
in the community, because there, there is an economic impact of having so many people come in, um, especially with the number of teams that come in for some of these tournaments, and so, we wanted to keep the cost as much as possible reasonable. Cause there does seem to be a shift, and a lot of other communities are putting on tournaments too, and with all the competition and costs we've actually seen go down for some of these things, cause communities are trying to draw these teams and, um, these folks in, into their community, um, for these tournaments. And so, we don't have very many tournaments in Waverly currently, um, which we'd like to see more, um, to help offset the cost of keeping up our fields. But that was, after a lot of discussion, that's where the Parks and Rec community landed.
Okay.
One of the other things that I got to thinking of after the, the meeting is, is that forty dollars per practice for non-waverly-based teams. And, and we don't have to make a decision this year necessarily, but potentially for next year, we're close to Parks and Recs again, is, is really what that definition of a non-waverly-based team is for having practice fees. Only because we have some teams that are made up primarily of waverly kids, that they play no games, no tournaments, no anything in L.A. And so, they're, they utilize the, the fields for, for free, but yet, they're never playing in any tournaments or bringing any folks from out of town into the community for games, so there's not any way to recruit any of that money that it takes to keep those fields up that they're using, but it also doesn't bring any economic dollars into the community either, and so. I guess, worth maybe having some dialogue with Parks and Recs department level, but again, maybe discussion for, for next year, it's just something I've been thinking about since that meeting that we, they did indicate there's a number of teams with practice here, but never play any games, any tournaments, anything here, so they're really waverly-based, or can, somehow we can incentivize them to have that free practice usage on those fields if they play a number of games, maybe six games a season or five games a season, something to try to offset from that.
Check off.
That's good information.
I actually did find, now I'm looking through my notes again, so, we're dropping about twenty dollars a game. And then the tournaments, it was a drop of two hundred and fifty dollars per field per day, uh, for fields. So in total, this proposal drops, um, for Riptide specifically, um, almost twenty-five, over twenty-four hundred dollars less that they'd be paying us to use our fields this coming year compared to previous year, so.
Previously, it was a per-game?
Previously, it was, it was per-hour.
Per-hour.
On, on game, it was twenty-five an hour.
Versus for the day.
And most games were two hours.
Right, hold on.
But.
They, yes, they were advocating for these changes.
Yeah.
So what happened with that?
Yes, Riptide was.
But the, but the changes would be for any team that's gonna
It's for anyone, yeah.
to a tournament, so.
Uh, cause we didn't give them everything that they wanted, right?
This would give them, basically.
I don't think you gave them everything.
No, then give them everything that they wanted.
They wanted a little bit more, I think, money-wise.
Yeah.
That sounded pretty good deal, yeah.
I think it's a very good deal for them.
You know, what I came away from that meeting with, with is, we just need to figure out a way to get these fields utilized more. That's why we, we spent a lot of money to build them, to put lights on them, to keep them up year-round. So, we need to get utilization, if we get utilization, that'll help offset some of the cost, but if they're sitting idle, it doesn't matter what we charge, we're
Right. Yeah.
Are they still threatening to, who's the one, Peter McHulston?
I wouldn't say it's a threat, they're definitely utilizing Lincoln, that, they, they used many, they used Lincoln quite a bit this last year compared to, to Waverly. We dropped a bunch of games this year that they played in Waverly, or in Lincoln instead of Waverly, and they'll, they're gonna continue. The, the deal they have in the facility in Lincoln, we cannot compete with.
It's a private entity.
I know.
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's an introductory contract that they have right now, so we cannot compete with that.
It'll change.
My fields too.
So though, I think they'll be, um, they'll be glad to hear of these changes, so.
Especially for the camera, right?
Yeah, it works good for their.
We can incentivize more tournaments, I mean, that's really more so what this was about, it wasn't about the Riptide tournament, it was about how can we try to make this more cost-effective for any team, whether it be softball team, baseball team, to do here, to here.
Yeah, cause the games, the games might bring in some, but it's not bringing in a ton of
Yeah.
of revenue, um, but the tournaments really do.
And the revenue helps drive revenue and through the community.
Right, through the community, I have to say.
All right, anything else?
Um, I would just say, we just need to keep an eye on year-to-year agreements and see what comes up next year, because at some point, there has to be a tipping point where we can't drop it anymore from where, where we are. Um, because it's hard to maintain these fields, especially like Erin said, when they're not getting utilized.
Yeah, we gotta get utilization, that's, that's gonna be the key to, to making the, these work.
So.
Is some of that cost though supposed to be people's property taxes that pay every year, too?
Sure, um, but you could make the case that a lot of those folks aren't utilizing that space, and they could use that park space for other space, and they could use that park space for other things that could be beneficial to the community. And a lot of the practice facilities you're talking about were the fields like in Wayne, like they're practicing there for free, and there's a lot of wear and tear on those fields, and it takes a large amount of space in Wayne, obviously. So, I mean, if it doesn't even out, and it doesn't cost effectively, and it doesn't make sense at some point, you could really reutilize that space in Wayne Park instead of having two practice fields and having other things.
Can I ask a question about those fields? Is this wrong time to ask about it? I mean, they're just growing weeds, are they supposed to do that?
Right, no, they are. Actually, that was addressed during the meeting. That's on purpose, because they're not being utilized right now. And so those fields, because they're practice fields, it doesn't really make sense to maintain them through the winter months, because they're not the most pristine fields anyways. So come springtime, they will be
Fixed.
Fixed and pulled and stuff like that.
That's long for the park, you're going to do it there long.
Yeah, once, once the official season's ended, we quit, which I thought was a really good cost-effective scenario, honestly, to let them go.
It does look
It looks terrible.
It does.
Yeah.
I agree.
But it costs a lot of money to keep that.
Yeah, yeah, and that was the argument, is we either need to use them or
All right, anything additional? Call for a vote, please. Motion carried, three to zero. All right, let's go to consideration of granting a permanent drainage easement.
I move to approve granting of a permanent drainage easement generally located in the Riley Edition in Waverly, Nebraska, and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Is this that concrete channel that runs between those two houses? It looks like it from the map.
Yeah, yeah. And it was put in when the development was built, and that should have been city right-of-way through there, or should, the city should have had an easement through there from day one, and we haven't. And in order to maintain it, we always have to go and talk to each of the various property owners, and this way, this gives us the ability to go in there and maintain that without having to bother people to have to get in there, so. Any discussion? Call for a vote, please. Motion carried, three to zero. All right, let's go to community reports. Allison is not here, does anybody have that due? Do you have that here? I did. Parks and Rec had their meeting last week. We talked about, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the fees for the various programs, the summer programs. Next meeting, we will talk about fees for the aquatic center, so we get those set in place, and we can get those published. I think that was really and truly the bulk of our discussion on that meeting, was about fees, so. I think at the next meeting, we will have the approval to add the third person, have the job code and everything opt out of that person at the next meeting. Our November tenth, so ball is open, right? Last ball, T-ball, baseball, softball, registration is open. That's in last week, I believe, Tuesday, Wednesday. Well, now that we've passed the One, that too. So now it's So now it's official. I think that's it. All right, thank you. Public Works, Erin.
They serviced some vehicles, they've been out sweeping the streets mainly for leaves. They filled in a sunken in-spot on North Hundred Forty-Fifth in Stowe, Danvers. They got the aluminum steps in for the wastewater treatment plant, and they put those in. They burned brush, but they need to do it again, they didn't get through it all. They put the camera down in twenty-five sewer segments looking for tree roots. They have twenty-one sewer segments that have varying amounts of tree roots to cut out. Having had a meeting with MBA Sewery about increasing water usage out there, that MBA is going to be increasing their water. Flushed the hydrants and finished the last forty hydrants, one of them did break on the corner of North Hundred Forty-Third and Guilford, so they're repairing that, and repairs to the two remain on North Hundred Forty-Fifth where that fiber optic cable was going through.
Thank you. Public Health, David.
Waverly Fire joined Greenwood and Ashland in an annual walk through the Cook fertilizer plant west of Greenwood. That falls in the suburban fire district, so it was good to go through that procedure and look through that, it's got a lot of chemicals out there that could be very hazardous. Fire also was requested by Tractor Supply to guard the Hometown Heroes event. There was two trucks out there for that, for the community, and three members participated at, and then Tractor Supply made a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation to the department for having us out there. And we also participated in the Waverly Chamber of Commerce Halloween Trick or Treat event from five to seven, handing out candy. And then also traffic control on the highway to help kids safely cross the highway back and forth, eleven members participated in that. And then there was some discussion about Sand Express, it is set for December seventh, at the wave from noon until four-thirty with a lighted parade to follow.
Awesome, thank you.
That was a cool parade last year.
Yeah.
I thought.
You can drive me again.
Yeah, I'm trying to learn you tonight. I didn't drive you today.
Yeah, you did. Thank you. All right, fiscal comments, hold on a minute.
I have anything to say, Sydney?
No, not today.
All right, senior minister, stop.
One thing, I will go back on the Parks and Rec, we have winterized the bathrooms at Wayne Park, and so those are no longer available, so if you're walking on the trail in Wayne Park, it's inappropriate, because there are no restrooms of them out there. And so, and they are, I'm sure they've probably done the ones out at Lawson Park by now as well, I know the sprinklers have been winterized as well, so. As far as in the office, just continuing to work on a lot of our budget projects, I will commend all of my, all of the, I shouldn't say my, all of the department heads for the city have really done really well about getting a big jump start into their budget projects and ordering their equipment and everything. Lead times increase every year for equipment and project timelines seem to drag out farther and farther, so I'm really glad that they're all jumping in and getting stuff done right away, so. That's all I have. All right, great.
I move to enter executive session to protect the public interest and receive legal advice.
I'll call for a vote. Wait, wait, for a second. Motion carried, three to zero. Do you want to ask Rob what to say on this one? She might have some information. All right. Step you will push in. We're on the executive session at
Six thirty-eight.
Six thirty-eight.